The Yountville Town Council, it is Tuesday, June 2nd, 2009, at 6:02 PM. This is a special meeting of the Yountville Town Council.
It's 5:02.
Oops, 5:02 PM.
It is 5:02.
Wow.
Maybe 5:03.
I'd like to move that it's 5:02 PM.
Thanks a lot for that information. It is going to be a long evening. We have a lot to cover this evening. We have several people that are applying for these grant requests. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28. You will be able to watch this on video web streaming if you go to the townofyountville.com and click on Town Council Agendas. You can see yourself making your presentation. And this whole session will be rebroadcast Friday on Channel 28 at noon, I believe. While you're in council chambers this evening, we would appreciate it if you would turn off your cell phones and pagers so we can get through this uninterrupted. May we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Chilton.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Mayor Saucerman.
Here. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None that motion carries. Item five is public comment. Anybody wishing to comment on anything that's not on this agenda this evening? Basically, the nonprofit grant applications. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment and move on to item six. Nonprofit grant funding applicant presentations.
Mayor, if I may, I'm going to recuse myself from the presentations and deliberations because my wife is on the Board of Directors of one of the applicant services, so I don't want to be seen as having any undue influence in the conversations.
Okay. The record reflect that Vice Mayor Dunbar will be stepping down for the grant application presentations.
Mayor Saucerman, I'd also like to recuse myself because my husband's also on one of the boards for one of the applicants.
Playing the sympathy card.
Is it working, cellphone?
I don't know, Rick. We'll see. Okay, our first application is from the Friends of the Library.
Good evening. My name is Carla Reiff, R-E-Y-F-F, two Fs and two Franks, and I represent the Friends of the Library in Yountville. I'm the Secretary of the Board of Directors. I am here to request a grant for the six-week program sponsored by the Napa City County Library and has a grant that has been supported by this town for at least the last 10 years that I'm aware of when I look through the minutes, our minutes, and see what we've been getting in terms of support. The theme this year will be Be Creative at Your Library, and the objective will be to explore the world of books through reading, music, dance, and art, and to improve the reading skills of the youth in Yountville. This is a program exclusively in Yountville. The program targets youth from the ages of three to 12, and there's a bonus this year. If the children sign up and they have overdue books at the library, they will have their library fees rescinded. The aim of the program is to have each child read 10 books and, under the supervision of professional library staff, and there are enhancements such as a juggling circus act, a puppet show called The Tale of the Dragon's Tale, T-A-I-L, starring Princess Penny, and an interactive music and song day. There'll be storytimes, programs with drumming, singing, origami, drawing, and other creative arts, and at the end of the summer, there will be a celebration with prizes. Last year, in 2008, there was a total of 597 adults and children attending these programs, and the children themselves read over 880 books and completed the program. To conclude, I would like to quote the Library News and Reviews Bulletin, which I believe you have received, and it says that "Summer reading helps in the development of reading skills and encourages one to have a lifelong love of books. Please take advantage of all the services and resources provided by your library this summer." If you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond if I can.
Councilmember Chilton, any questions?
Carla, in your application, it says for 2008, there was 597 attendance. Is that total attendance by participants?
Yeah, if there's three events, the big events, and there's 50 people at each, well, that's 150 people that count towards that.
Okay.
I believe that's how they count the statistics.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any more?
Councilmember Dutton? Carla, where do the funds, what do the funds actually go for? To pay?
They go to pay, I think they allocate it out to pay the library staff, to pay for the individual performances, so much for that. Then the children also get things like book bags with, I don't, different things, different little things in them, and charts, and little books to record their, and pens, and pizzas, and then there's a party at the end where they have pizzas and snacks and that kind of stuff.
Okay, good. Thank you. Yountville Elementary School?
Good evening, Council. My name is Troy Knox. I'm the principal of Yountville Elementary School, and first of all, I just want to thank you for providing this grant opportunity for all the nonprofits because, directly or indirectly, Yountville School benefits. So, thank you for having this program to begin with. Tonight, Yountville School is requesting funding to help purchase a set of choral risers. And let me give you a little bit of background about Yountville School. We have a total enrollment of 161 students. Of those, 81 students are residents of Yountville, and so we have 72 Yountville families. And so, throughout the year, we have a number of performances, and the school currently does not own a set of choral risers. Now, if you've ever been to one of our performances, it's great if your child is one of the first 12 in the front row, because you got a front-row view, but beyond that, it's difficult to see all of our beautiful kids singing their hearts out. And what I did not include in the initial application is just simply a photo of the risers themselves, along with a cost detail, so you know how I got to that amount. Is this something that you would like to review? Would that be helpful? When I spoke to our music teacher, Mrs. Vader, one of the requirements for the choral risers is that they be portable, and as you see, they are on wheels, and so we're looking to buy three sets of risers, and I was astonished at how expensive risers are. The total cost comes to $2583.70, and we were fortunate enough to acquire a grant from the Walmart store in Napa to support our music program. However, we weren't able to fully fund the choral risers, so that's why we're here seeking your support tonight. Obviously, if we are able to acquire these risers, we will be able to use them not only at the school, but we can tote them right on down to our new community hall next year and beyond for performances during the holidays, for events such as Kiwanis events and what have you. So, that's our request, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Good. Any questions?
Mr. Knox?
Yes.
This is just from what people have said to me. I haven't heard this officially. I know that the school is making an effort to beef up its music program.
Absolutely.
Can you talk about that and the context of that?
By all means. First of all, we're really proud of the fact that at the fourth and fifth grade level, we offer a pull-out band class, where students can take a strings class or a band class, a band instrument, trumpet, flute, what have you, and we have nearly 100% participation, not quite. Next year, we are going to really emphasize 100% students participate in a band instrument, simply because we know how effective it is in tying into their academic performance. And so, what we want to do is just really strengthen our overall visual and performing arts program to enhance our overall curricular program, because that's what Yountville School is all about, just hitting the books hard and also being able to express themselves through performance, song, and music. So, that's what our goal is. We're moving in that direction. We hope to strengthen it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dutton, any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yountville Little League Baseball.
It's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city, our Town Council. My name's Rick Tucker. For those of you who don't know me, I am both resident of town, and I'm also the president of Yountville Little League. I appreciate you having us tonight to consider this benefit grant. In our letter to you dated on the 15th, we identified the particulars to the grant, and I just want to quickly introduce those. As you know, Yountville's, our Little League, is made up of approximately 70 kids, the vast majority of which are actually local residents of the community. If they're not residents of the community, they've all either in the past attended Yountville Elementary School or presently in attendance at the school. In addition to the 70 kids that sign up, 25% or more of those are actually given scholarships by the Little League, which goes to show our support for making certain everybody participates. What a scholarship essentially is, is that the Little League eats the cost of registration for those children who want to play ball. What we're requesting this evening from you is a grant in the amount of $2,500. There are two particular items that we identified, the total cost of which, and I didn't include this in our letter to you, but the total cost of which is over $7,900. First is, in addition to our scoreboard, which includes a pitch count, a pitch count's required by Little League standards to identify, and if you've ever attended, and I know some of you have attended the games, one of the most confusing things that you'll see are the parents running around saying, "What's the number? Was it this? Was it that?" And so, this provides an opportunity to make that a more organized effort. The other thing that we've noticed is necessary recently is with the construction of the concession stand. We have a tankless water heater that does not provide the capacity to accommodate the cleaning that we need of the concession stand, which runs every game, and so we'll need to install a water heater, but we need to install it, excuse me, in a sensitive way where that can either be placed on the roof or placed in a closet, so the costs are not necessarily just the installation and purchase of the equipment, but rather that it be designed in a way where it can be screened properly on the building. So, again, we thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight, and we're hopeful that you'll see kindly on our application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Rick?
Rick, oh, go ahead. Yeah, please.
I was just curious, Rick, does this pitch count, does it go on the scoreboard or is it just sort of a side type thing?
It is a separate attachment that can fit within, you recall, there's two posts, the posts that are set in concrete.
Right.
They'll sit below it, but they need to be trenched all the way back to the concession stand where the power is.
Councilmember Chilton?
Last year, we, and you mentioned this in your letter, helped fund some of the costs on the restroom facilities. I assume that's an expense that is continuing this year?
It is ongoing. Every year, we have one or two. This is the first year we actually had two porta-potties installed. Probably in the future, we'll go back to one, as that appears to be what's needed. There's also the secondary one that soccer folks use, that's up in right field, if you will. It is an ongoing expense, but what we wanted to do this year, and what I particularly wanted to do this year as president, is connect the grant to something meaningful, something that stays there. If you've watched the games at all, you'll see that on the scoreboard now. It references the town of Yountville and our appreciation to it for its benefits in the past and as well as sign that's in the outfield. So, this is something that we think is a little bit more meaningful.
Did you have a cost between the pitch count machine and the water heater?
Well, by process of elimination, I know the total was 7,900 or slightly over that. The water heater was 3,200 of that, so it was the smaller amount.
All right, thanks, Rick. Napa Valley Museum.
Good evening. My name is Rick Aragon. I'm the executive director for the Napa Valley Museum. I want to thank you for this opportunity. Before I say anything, I just would like to share some happy news. Some of you might be aware of the drama that we've been having about our lease in Calvet. We've recently learned that the Veterans Home received word from the governor's office to let us alone, so we're staying in Yountville.
Yay.
We're applying for a pretty hefty grant that covers two parts of our programming. One is familiar to many people. It's the trunk program. We're asking $2,500 for the trunk program. We have a permanent collection of Native American artifacts, geological specimens, and historical artifacts, going back to the Mexican period through the early settlers, the history of viticulture, its objects, photographs, and what have you. These areas of the permanent collection are grouped into trunks, suitcases, and brought out to regional schools. And sometimes there are three presentations a day, sometimes just two, sometimes four. And in the last few years, we've averaged over 5,000 kids reached by these presentations. And just recently, there's been a spike, so I think for the year 2008, 2009, the school year, we will have even more. And I think that's attributed to the reality of what teachers are facing in the classroom, which is very little extra time to prepare special units focusing on history and science. A couple weeks ago, we made a presentation to a Yountville third-grade group, and the teacher allowed that they don't have science there, and so the geological presentation for Yountville Elementary was it for them for a while. So, these teachers are able to use our presentations as a focus for in-class projects after the president or leaves, and it's a real great experience for kids to get hands-on experience. They're not just learning facts and figures to be tested on at the end of the school year, but it's a real hands-on, vital part of their education. So, the $2,500 will help underwrite that. The other part of our grant would be helping us with our summer show, Portals to the Past. This is a celebration of our permanent collection, along with some help from the Napa County Historical Society, the Society of California Pioneers, the Grace Hudson Museum, and Ukiah, and the Veterans Home. We're borrowing uniforms and some other memorabilia from them. So, we're putting on this exhibition that will fill up 3,200 square feet in these discreet little displays that I've just mentioned, focusing on the different parts of our collection, and we're recreating a Victorian home with a parlor and a kitchen and so on, and just bringing our collection out on the floor for the benefit of the community. A good part of this exhibition will be the video version of the book Yountville that Pat Alexander put together, and this will be running continuously through the almost four-month-long show. We would propose to have a special Yountville opening after the opening to the membership and general public, and we've had other events like that in the past, the barbecue in the patio. We would like to do that again. The show runs through October 4th, which is Yountville days, and we would like to have a special Yountville closing to bring the show down. Our Director of Education has planned a number of field trips for schools, and then all the summer camp programs, we have 500 Yountville schoolchildren will be attending the summer camps, and 150 kids from the county after-school program, they will be coming to the show. All of them will be given a guided tour through portals of the past, and it'll be a great, maybe introduction or reinforcement of their knowledge of California history and certainly local history. So, we hope that you support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Napa Valley Symphony. Anyone hear from the symphony? All righty. How about Napa Emergency Women's Services? News. What's news?
Hi, I'm Mayor Saucerman and members of the Town Council. I'm Tracy Lamb, the executive director for News, and we're requesting help with funding for the provision of services specifically to clients who come to us from the city, from the town of Yountville. Unfortunately, as this economy has slowed down, domestic violence has been on the rise, and the need for services to help keep our women and children safe has become even more essential. In the past year, News has seen an increase in requests for shelter, emergency assistance for things like food and clothing, and requests for restraining orders, and especially the need for housing. Housing has become really critical in this time when people are losing jobs and really struggling with finding a place to live, so our transitional housing services have been really in high demand. So, we're working very hard to serve the women, to help them to become free and independent from violence. Unfortunately, the experience for women living in Yountville has been no exception, and over this past year, we have really doubled the number of services that we provided to women and children coming from this area. Services have included multiple calls to our 24-hour crisis line, again, requests coming directly from here for emergency food and clothing, and help with preparation for court hearings and counseling. We provided 126 services to, for women coming from Yountville. And one of the things that we were able to do was help with finding them social services and means to help with filling their gaps in funding, like applying for public aid. One of the new services at News is that we've added a program called Safe Solutions, which works with women who have co-occurring mental health, substance abuse, and domestic violence issues. And one of the women that we served who came from Yountville needed those services, and so she received intensive case management, including the fact that she was on disability as a result of just having a child and having been the victim of domestic violence, and so we were able to help her apply for public aid and help her find safe housing for herself and her children. She was able to get food stamps and really become independent of that situation at the same time she just had a newborn baby. So, News has experienced in this past year reductions in several of our funding areas, including just the general community giving, and also some of the funding sources have had funding problems of their own and have been unable to give at the level that they usually do, so this just makes the funds that we receive from this source even more valuable to us. And so, we just wanted to thank you for your ongoing support over the years, and just, again, this year, appreciate your considering our requests, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Tracy? No, nothing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Napa Valley Hospice.
Good evening, and thank you for your time this evening. My name is Max Bouverie. I'm the Bereavement Services Manager for Napa Valley Hospice and Adult Day Services, and the focus and request of our grant is for bereavement-related services in Yountville. Every year, we serve not only hospice families, hospice patients and their families who have had terminal illnesses and been under our services. We not only serve them in ways of bereavement, but we serve the entire county with people who have had losses by sudden death, unexpected death, and so on. So, we provide a number of different avenues for these services, from individual counseling to groups available throughout the year for people who have had losses, to a very extensive schools group that we have throughout the county. And here, we serve Yountville Elementary and Redwood and Vintage, which I think Yountville is connected with, and we do that throughout the school year. We also provide grief-crisis response whenever something unexpected occurs, losses occur in the county, wherever part of the county that might be. So, what we, these are services that, unlike some of our other hospice services, are not reimbursable. We need to create funding in different ways, especially to spread it through the county, not just in terms of serving hospice families. So, and again, we do it in the many ways that I just mentioned. We've been in the schools for over 15 years, and one of the things I would like to sort of emphasize is that the work that we do in the schools at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, is done weekly throughout the year. We run groups on a weekly basis, and we have children in our groups for an extended period of time. And what that does, that I've seen for years and years, is it helps a child who's had a loss, who doesn't really understand loss yet, and has a difficult time understanding it regarding whatever level they might be at, they have a different sense of what it is and what it means, and how it might impact them. And probably the most powerful thing I can say about the schools aspect of our program is that we act as an intervention to help young people integrate their losses in such a way that it doesn't afflict them for the rest of their lives in some way. It gives them an opportunity to integrate the loss of a parent, the loss of someone very close to them, and not thwart their development going forward. So, we have a very special children's program, and I do need to emphasize that. We also have a summer camp called Courage Camp that we run every summer, and that is open to any Napa County resident who's had a loss in the previous year or even back from there a little bit. And are there any questions that the council might have?
Any questions? Councilmember Chilton?
I was reading application, which I don't think you wrote, but it said in here that our team provided direct patient care to over 490 Napa County individuals during this time period they cover, and it talks about the 490 patients. So, I assume that is patients who are, who are under...
Yes, thank you for the question. Were you finished?
Well, I wanted to clarify one. That's patients who had critical illnesses.
Right.
Terminal illnesses. That's that number. The second thing is, in here, it says there's 78 of those individuals lived in Yountville.
Right.
So, I'm doing basic math here. That's 15% of your total caseload on terminal patients.
Correct.
And we're 3% of the population of the county at most, so I think you seem to do a lot in Yountville.
Yeah. Well, we do, and I think part of that may be proximity to Napa proper versus, you know, Lake Berryessa and more extended areas. But, you know, we're very involved here and have been for many years. There's another, I'm not sure if it's reflected in here, but in the past few years, there's been about a 30% increase of our involvement here in terms of with patients, terminal ill patients and their families, as well as our involvement with the community at large who have had other types of losses. So, it has grown visibly in the past few years.
That's great. I mean, I know of people who have, I think, personal experiences even on this board, but that's, even that number surprised me that it was that high, so thank you.
Yeah, and I might add that, you know, although, you know, I'm emphasizing a little bit the schools and the value for the kids, you know... schools and the value for the kids, you know, losses are not easy for anybody, you know, and they can get in our way of our futures too, even as adults. And so, these bereavement services, both the individual counseling as well as the many groups that we offer throughout the year for adults who have had losses, really help people, again, come terms, integrate over time, put it, find a place in their life history and their life journey for the loss and free themselves to continue on the next chapter of their lives.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question. I know you do do work at the Veterans Home.
Yes.
And has that been about the same over the years, your involvement there?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't know the exact statistics. I know that we're very involved with the veterans, that, you know, one of the reasons that we have the percentage of patients in Yountville is because of our work at the VA. And so, we have actually certain practitioners that are involved specifically at the VA and have consistent involvement from nursing to social work to chaplaincy and so on down. So, yeah, it has grown. I can't give you an exact number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Grippy. I'm the Associate Director at Cope Family Center and I just wanted to thank the Council on behalf of the staff and the Board of Cope for your passive support of the families that we've served, Yountville families we've served through Cope Family Center, as well as our, taking time to look at our current request for this year. We've seen an increase in the number of families that we've been serving at our Family Resource Center in Napa as a result of the current economic climates and an increase in the number of Yountville families that we've been serving over the last five years. Cope helps families access services that they may not know that are available to them in order to help them increase their income and decrease their expenses, create a safe environment in which to raise their children, and avoid duplication of services by partnering with other organizations. The families that we served over the past year from the town of Yountville have primarily accessed a lot of our financial stability and economic services. We have one family that's participating in our matched savings account, so this family is actually working towards improving their ability to earn a better income and provide better for their children by getting their accounting degree. We've got a number of families who actually participated in our free tax clinics and that helps put cash right back in their pockets for things such as food, housing, and transportation. And then, more recently with the crisis, we've had more middle-income families who, due to loss of employment or housing, don't know what services are available and how to access them. So, one case we actually submitted with our final report from last year was a family from Yountville that used our emergency aid services and as well as our case management services. As Tracy from News mentioned, Cope has also been affected by the decrease in investments in our organization. We have been successful in retaining a majority of our supporters in our investments, but this next year, our budget will decrease by about 20% from this current year. So, every single dollar that is invested in our organization is crucial to both providing the direct services that we provide as well as helping to leverage investments from returning and new prospects. And we are very keen stewards of our supporters' investments in that 85 cents of every dollar that we bring in the door goes directly to the services that we provide to the families. The one program, since the last, since we were, submitted this application, we found, we were notified that we are going to be taking on a program called the Child Abuse Prevention Program from the, where we awarded a grant from the County of Napa Health and Human Services. And this program is a school-based program for first, third, and fifth grade students where we go in and we teach the children how to be safe, how to be alert for dangers to them, and how to talk to their parents about those types of things. For the coming year, we're looking at providing those services to eight schools in Napa, but we would like to be able to expand and provide those schools in Yountville Elementary as well. That's what our request is about. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Molly's Angels?
Good evening, Council. My name is Fran Rosenberg and I'm the President of Molly's Angels. Our plan is rides for seniors. And first of all, I would like to thank you for the grant that we received last year from the town of Yountville. We don't receive grants from state or federal government or money from the wine auction, so everything really helps us. Now, what our program is, we provide rides for the seniors in Yountville to go to various doctor and dentist appointments. We help them with their shopping and with various things that they might need. We also provide, will provide them with wheelchairs and walkers and canes, whatever their needs are. And a lot of the seniors cannot afford any of these things that we offer. We, today, well, I'll go with today, I received a phone call from a lady from Yountville. She's in her 80s and she has to get to Santa Rosa. She has three appointments for surgery and there's nobody else that will provide this service for her. She's a Kaiser resident, Kaiser Insurance. And we will take people back and forth to Vallejo, to Napa, to Vacaville, to Santa Rosa, and otherwise, there would be no means for them to get there. There are no other services that will provide this. We will also sit and wait for her while she's at her appointment and sometimes these appointments take three, four, or five hours. One time, it took six hours and we waited for her. So, that's what Molly's Angels is all about with our seniors and if I can answer any questions, I'll be more than happy to.
Thank you. Questions? I know we did provide some grant funding last year.
Yes, you did.
And your report is kind of sparse on the facts. Do you know how many trips you actually made in Yountville or?
I would have to check with our bookkeeper. We fill out a paper each time we take somebody and we log in the hours, the miles, and with the outrageous prices of gasoline last year, it really came in handy.
Yeah.
But, I could get you that information.
Yeah, that'd be good information to have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Napa Valley Fair Housing?
Good evening, Members of the Council. I'm Catherine Winter and I'm the Executive Director from Fair Housing Napa Valley and I brought you our brochure. This is really the first opportunity I've had to come up and speak with you about our I don't know if you're aware of it, but you've actually been funding our services ever since the inception of our agency in 2002 at this same level. It came through the City of Napa Housing Authority and every year, we just got $2,000 from you as part of the work that we do countywide and to cover the costs of Yountville. People confuse us with affordable housing and what we do is assist people who are having disputes, whether they're landlords with bad tenants or tenants with bad landlords. We try to help bring parties together. We're kind of an impartial, neutral place where people can come. Our goal is to keep people housed as long as possible, but our primary mission is leveling the playing field for people so that they can have access to housing, so that if they are experiencing discrimination, they have a place to go. We are funded by HUD to be an enforcement agency. So, if you will look at the second page of the application that I've given you, this is just simply for the town of Yountville. So, you will see that we had six fair housing cases last year. A fair housing case is an investigation of discrimination and we have about 1,000 cases a year countywide, 100 are fair housing and about 900 are tenant landlord and then there's mobile homes. And we're also dealing with a lot more mortgage foreclosure issues this year, as you might imagine, and have been for the last three years. But you'll see that there were seven landlord-tenant problems in the town of Yountville. These are households. There were nine mobile home issues in the last year and 15 of the people were residents and one person was a housing provider. You can see how many of the clients were seniors, how many were disabled, how many were females and males, and how many children. So, you can see that we've served 21 children as well. The bulk of the clients we serve tend to be low-income. If you look on the next page, you'll see the types of cases that you've got going on in Yountville. Habitability means the place has a leaky roof or the toilet isn't working or there's some sort of problem that they need help from us to contact the landlord to try to make sure that the place they're living is acceptable. Notice means they got a notice to move out or some kind of notice, there was some sort of problem with a notice. Rent could be missing, could be raised, and change in term and condition might mean that they've moved in and they had certain terms in their lease and then it got changed. Peaceful enjoyment is just disturbance. Deposit, they didn't get their security deposit back. Utility was probably a common meter. So, these are, this just gives you an idea, there was one foreclosure last year. This gives you an idea of the range of services that we're providing to people in Yountville. Countywide, probably 50% of the cases that we deal with are, involve people with disabilities. It's a high number of people, one in five households in Napa County has someone living in it with a disability. An example of something we did that had national ramifications, we were involved in a lawsuit actually with 17 clients in the city of Napa with the largest senior housing provider in the United States. And our clients prevailed and got settlements and as a result of the work that we did, 62,000 housing units across the country may no longer engage in some of the discriminatory practices against people with disabilities, seniors. So, our little tiny agency of 4.5 people can sometimes have some real punch when it comes to investigating and pursuing the enforcement of discrimination issues that appear to be local but can turn out to be national. Just to give you an idea of cost, a fair housing case typically costs around $1,000. That's an average. A tenant landlord case costs about $100. There's much, much more time involved in investigating a fair housing case and putting it together and getting it to the point where it can either be reviewed to the State of California or the federal government or a private attorney. So, with that, I'll end and be happy to answer any questions you might have about what it is we do.
Thank you. Any questions?
I guess I question, are you losing the funding that we provided for Napa?
Let me help clarify if I could. What we have, as you know, we've had a change in structure over the last several years from the Housing Authority of Napa Valley to our contract arrangement with the City of Napa to administer it. And what we're simply trying to do in this year, working with the City of Napa, is fully understand, because we're going through reviewing the contract elements. And to be candid, I explained to Ms. Winter that this program really needed to come into this program rather than just be the pass-through element that hadn't been perhaps well documented into the structure. I will also point out that this is, if you may recall when we discussed the housing element, the town's financial support and contribution towards these types of programs are a strong factor of effective housing element from HCD review, so you may recall there was a footnote. So, we felt that this was the appropriate place to put this program for consideration and also to allow a better understanding by the Council that indeed, this was a community service program consistent with that of the other programs. But upon review, we have indeed had a financial contribution for approximately the past nine years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Junior Achievement?
I'm Dawn Vorwork and I'm the District Director for Junior Achievement here in Napa County. Junior Achievement is a non-for-profit organization and we're financed by businesses, foundations, grants, and individuals. And the purpose of JA is to educate and inspire young people to value free enterprise, business, and economics to improve the quality of their lives. Since its founding in 1919, Junior Achievement has contributed to the businesses and economics education of young people in the U.S. and throughout the world. We are actually a global foundation and we're in over 130 countries. And I was actually just here today in Yountville doing a JA day, as we call it, at the elementary school. And what we try to do is by bringing the volunteer into the class, we're bringing a real-world experience to the students, but we also follow the curriculum that each grade is getting at each level. The elementary school program shows the elementary school students the relevance of education to the workplace. And each grade level has a kit and there's hands-on activities delivered by a volunteer role model and the students will better understand the relationship between what they learn in school and their successful participation in our economy. So, we're trying to help them to see what their being in school can lead to as far as different careers and why it's so important to have an education. And here, I actually did the kindergarten class today and this is just a little sampling of some of the things that are in the kids. So, each grade level has five different lessons and then with that, there's a little activity to go with it and we try to make it fun for the kids and, but they're also learning at the same time. And even at the kindergarten level, several of the lessons dealt with money and the importance of being careful with money and saving your money and making wise choices. And this continues through each grade level and we do actually go into middle school and also high school. And again, it's trying to emphasize to the kids the importance of financial literacy and the importance of an education. And I think we can see by the state of our own country, there was, there were a lot of people that were not financially literate because poor choices were made. So, anyway, I feel it's something that can really add and enrich the students' lives and I thought this was very cute. One of the girls today handed this note to me as I was ready to leave the class and it made me feel good because not only did I know that the students learned something, but they really did enjoy it also. And we have done Yountville Elementary School for several years. It's been done free of charge through, again, grants and donations, but as everyone is finding out, we are way behind in the number of donations that we have been receiving. And of course, we still have to maintain paying for the cost of the kids and other expenses that go along with that. So, I'm here to ask if you could perhaps help out with us, so, because I know starting next school year, we're going to have to take a harder look at how each school is financed. So, that's Junior Achievement.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions, Bill? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do we adjourn at the June 8th meeting and discuss this and make our recommendations?
That's correct. That'll be your, that'll be your, one of your courses of business for that meeting.
Good. So, we'll be contacting you. Thank you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn this meeting?
So, okay.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
May I also request on behalf of the town clerk that you keep your material information so that we don't have to reproduce it?
Yes, leave it in the binder, right?
The score sheet for you to consider. She's also provided an outline of past history, past history and funding contributions that have been made for your review, so you can have that easily available.